We'll call our March 5, 2015, meeting of the Cookeville City Council to order. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilman Woodford.
Present.
Councilman Henry. Mayor Shelton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Epps.
Here.
Councilman Womack.
Here.
Four present, one absent.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite those that wish to do so to stand for the invocation given tonight by Pastor Mike Campbell from Trinity Assembly, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States Flag. Mr. Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's pray. Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for our great city and our town, Lord, for what you're doing. We ask now for this council, Lord, to have wisdom. We thank you, Lord, they'll have an understanding of the times, so that, Father, they'll know what Cookeville needs to do to secure the future. We thank you that you bring prosperity to our area, Father. And, Lord, we rejoice for a good outcome. Order our steps aright, and we thank you for this now, for your blessing to be upon this town, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, united, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll consider approval of agenda as presented. Do we have any changes?
No changes.
No changes. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
On five, old business. Consider approval of minutes of council meeting held on February 19, 2015. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Item six is our consent agenda. We have four items set a date, April 2, 15, for a public hearing on ordinance O-150305, amendment to the zoning code to allow by right or by special exception a calibrium in the CBD. Item B set a date, 4/2/15, for a public hearing on ordinance O-150306, rezoning 20.5 acres located at 1400 West 12th Street from CL and RS 10 to RM 8. Item C set a date, 4/2/15, for a public hearing on ordinance O-150307, rezoning 726 West End Street from RS 10 to RD. And item D, consider awarding bids for transformers. Do we have a motion for these four items on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
7A, new business. Hold a public hearing considering first reading ordinance O-150203, amendments to the official street map. Mr. Mills.
Mayor, council members, amendments to the official street map are necessary due to the addition of several streets or portion of streets in 2013 and 2014. These streets are the result of annexation or new street construction. Additional amendments are necessary to reflect some street name changes. As you know, the purpose of the official street map is to reflect those streets for which we're responsible for maintenance, and it also depicts the official street names. The amendments are depicted on the screen. There are six streets or portions of streets totaling 3.14 miles proposed for acceptance. This includes the addition of two streets or portions of streets from annexation, two streets from new subdivision development, and two streets constructed by the city as part of the Highlands Business Park. The two street name changes result from the development of a new subdivision and from the planned construction of a new I-40 interchange at Monmouth Creek Road and to accommodate the Academy Sports Distribution Center. Proposed amendments have been approved by the Planning Commissioner or recommended by the Planning Department.
All right, thank you. This time, we'll open the public hearing portion of the meeting. Does anyone in the audience like to speak about this matter? All right. We'll close the public hearing portion. We'll entertain a motion for this amendment.
So moved.
Second.
A motion is second. Any discussion among the council? Seeing none, all vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
7B, consider resolution R-150303, amending the Cookeville City Charter Private Chapter 49, Private Acts of 1999, as amended relative to joint ownership with Cookeville Regional Medical Center Authority. Sponsor, Mr. Korth.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Here on behalf of the Board of Trustees, Knight requesting a change to the hospital charter the city that would then be forwarded on to state legislation. And we're asking a request to change one piece in the charter that has to do with joint venturing. This change would allow the medical center to do joint ventures outside the campus. It still would require city council to approve each and every one of the joint ventures. And if there was any debt that the joint venture wanted to enter into, that would also have to come before city council for approval. Glad to answer any questions if there are any on this.
All right. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion?
I think this is a good thing, because I've seen for the last 20 years, the hospital developed more ability to function with outside entities. And it's just been an evolutionary process. Back in the mid-'90s, there was more controversy about the hospital getting into outside projects. But I've seen the regional hospital evolve from Cookeville General to Cookeville Regional and have this capability. I think this is just a natural progression.
Yes, it is. I agree with that.
Yep.
I have just a small question. It's Paul. I'm sorry, I wasn't at the last work session, but I did get a chance to get caught up to speed on this, and I'm going to vote for it. I kind of do have a question. Is this, by doing this, do you think this offers our medical community a little, kind of a more of an advantage competitive-wise?
More competitive and more flexibility.
Yeah, because there's a lot of health hospitals are doing this, I understand. So this gives us at least a catch-up with everybody else and give us a little edge.
By having the restriction right now, the way the charter reads, that we have to do it on hospital campus, means that the city and the hospital, which all property we purchased becomes city property, that any joint venture we do would have to be on that property. So if we wanted to do something outside of the four walls of the hospital or the property we own over there in another part of the city, it means we would have to buy the property first. So this is a better economical way to get into a joint venture, and let's say, let's try it for a couple of years in lease space, because lease space is cheaper than owning. And a lot of doctor offices don't own now, today. They do lease purchasing instead of, or leases instead of purchasing property.
Yeah, and that's been a financial trend I've noticed just by some of the stuff, work we've done here, that leasing has become much more upfront and out there than...
And flexible. Because you don't tie your resources up for a long period of time.
Okay. Thank you all.
And in the realm of private act hospitals in the state, we're actually the only one that had this provision in the charter.
Oh, really?
We were the only one that had it. Everybody else already had the ability to do this. So it does bring us up to speed.
And with this amendment, too, it does give the council more authority and more responsibility, because every joint venture would come before council for approval.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item 7C, consider resolution R-150305, commending the city to the additional cost for the provision of curb, gutter, and storm sewer along a portion of State Route 24, US Highway 70 North, East Spring Street, as required by TDOT for the city's multimodal access grant application for the installation of sidewalks. Mr. Mills.
Mayor, council members, this past December, we submitted an application to TDOT for a multimodal access grant, which would install approximately 5,400 feet of sidewalks on the north side of East Spring Street, from East Broad to Old Kentucky Road, 965 feet of sidewalks on Raider Drive, and an additional 1,245 feet of sidewalks on Carlin Drive. The council authorized the submission of the application through resolution 141023. And in that resolution, we committed to the matching funds of $50,000. This was done in October of last year. The total project cost at that time was estimated at $1 million, with the state contributing approximately $950,000, which is the state's maximum contribution under this grant program. Last week, we were notified by TDOT that our application would need to be modified to include the installation of curb, gutter, and storm sewer on the portion of East Spring Street, which has a speed limit of 45 miles per hour. That portion of Old Kentucky Road, or that portion of East Spring Street begins at Old Kentucky Road and runs to just east of Saxton Apartments. This is the original project area. And the black on the screen shows the area with a 45 mile per hour speed limit. The additional cost for construction of curb, gutter, and storm sewer is estimated by the Public Works Department to be $150,000. To complete the project under the current local match, significant modifications would have to be made. We looked at removing the sidewalks along Carlin Drive and along East Spring Street from Raider Drive east to Old Kentucky Road for this area, and then completing the remaining portion of East Spring Street with a 45 mile per hour speed limit with curb and gutter. So for this middle section here, we could do that with curb and gutter, remove this and remove this, and stay under our current commitment. Another possible modification would be considering removing the sidewalks on Raider Drive and then possibly installing more sidewalks on curb, gutter, and storm sewer on East Spring Street. But we were worried about removing the sidewalk on Raider Drive, because one of the key components of this, and one of the reasons why we think we're being evaluated very highly, is the connection to the school. So in the resolution before the council, the city would commit to paying the additional cost for the installing curb, gutter, and storm sewer on the portion of East Spring Street with a speed limit of 45 miles per hour up to $150,000. This would bring the city's total match or contribution to $200,000, and the total project cost would be increased to $1,150,000. This would mean the city's portion would be 17.4 percent, and the state's would be 82.6. And we would recommend for your approval of this resolution.
Very good. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion.
Well, I'm sorry, Jim, I interrupted you.
Anytime we can get something that high percentage from the state and improve the safety and the appearance of this, this is a win situation for us. So it's, and good job on writing that out.
Yeah, I'm up and down the road all the time, and that sidewalk is desperately needed. So I'm going to vote for this. It's just like, Jim, they'll be getting this much money for as little as we put in. But I just, my first thought was, it's like, I didn't realize that road was 45 miles an hour. That's way too, I mean, that's too fast. But that piece of road, it's too congested, goes by a school. But my understanding is that's TDOT's purview, and they're going to, they can decide how fast they want something to be. So I'm fine with that. I'm very okay with getting this sidewalk.
One of the things we noted at work session, Larry, since you weren't there, is that they told me, the representative from TDOT, that the committee that reviews these looks favorably, or more favorably upon an application if the community provides more than just the minimum match. So we think this will also improve our chances of having a successful application.
If it's any indication, the sidewalk that was put on Broad Street, it's used a lot. And I think, since I travel up and down there, run these roads, that sidewalk's going to be, is going to be a wonderful addition for our city.
And we discussed this, too, about we're being good stewards, because the road probably will not be widened in the foreseeable future. You talked to TDOT about that. It's already as wide as it's going to be in the foreseeable future, so we wouldn't be doing this money and then having it be torn up, so.
I'm for anything that helps our kids walk to school.
Exercise. If we win this, we'll know by, what, April or May?
I expect we'd know by June.
June.
Of course, it all depends on state budget, and we all know how that is. But I'll let you know as soon as I hear.
Anything else? All right. Seeing none, all vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item D, and the reason it is cold in this room, consider approval of emergency purchase and installation of boiler at City Hall. Mr. Woods.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As you've said, we arrived Monday morning and found that our boiler here at City Hall had failed, and is in poor condition, and no longer able to repair it. And so we looked at several different options, tried to find, excuse me, a comparable boiler that we could purchase and install with our own maintenance guys, ran into problems there with being able to get something comparable in a timely manner. And we went to Carwiles. They came and looked at it with us and gave us a proposal to replace the existing boiler with two smaller boilers. So if we ever had one fail, we would still have something that we could at least have some partial heat in the building. And these are high-efficiency boilers. They're 500 MBH condensing boilers. And the best news is they could do it very quickly. They could get the boilers quickly and get it done in a very quick fashion. So they gave us a proposal to purchase the boilers and install at a price not to exceed $44,700, and I would recommend your approval.
Yes, sir. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion is second. And despite Mr. Shipley's efforts to, since he was going out in three days to not do this, we are going to do this.
Wait till spring.
Exactly. That was what was said.
Gonna have that anymore, cold days.
I think we do need to declare this an emergency purchase.
Right. So as part of that motion...
Do we need to make an amendment?
I think so, yeah.
Let me reset the motion that this is an emergency motion to purchase this.
Emergency purchase motion, yes.
And you second that?
Second.
Yeah, okay. So any discussion? Seeing none, all vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
7E, consider awarding an environmental permitting mitigation supplement to the Wiser Company contract for the design of the Bennett Road extension. Mr. Brown.
Mayor and council, TDOT did the original environmental assessment of the fifth interchange and the Bennett Road extension in the north. After a certain period of time, they're required to do a reassessment. During this reassessment, they identified, or the company they had to do it, identified several wetlands and streams that were going to have to be mitigated that were not part of the original assessment. Our contract with Wiser, the engineering firm desiring Bennett Road extension, didn't have that in their contract to do all the mitigation proposals and permits for that. So they've submitted a supplement to their contract to take care of all these permits. Also, when we moved the center line of the road as it approached Highway 70 to the property line, instead of one property, caused us to get into a septic system. So we're going to have to relocate the septic system for that property as well. The total for all doing this, they proposed, is $27,904. I'd recommend your approval.
Yes, sir. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion. Seeing none, all vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
7F, consider approval of emergency services for wood debris grinding and removal of wood ground material. Mr. Brown.
Mayor and council, due to the recent ice storms, we're starting to get a greater influx of brush at our malt site. We already had quite a bit there. And in anticipation of more to come, I would like to grind what we have on the site now to make room for the remainder that's coming in. B&amp;B Ranch from Cookeville, Tennessee, has submitted a price of $22,500 to grind everything on site and haul it away, and I would recommend your approval.
Okay, so this would also be an emergency...
Yes, it would be.
...emergency contract purchase. So do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion?
I've got a lot, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've just got a lot of questions about, and I'm wondering if I can answer it, about debris removal. A lot of our neighbors, and I'm sure my fellow council members, when are they going to come, when's the city going to come by and pick up my debris? Well, it sounds like we're going to, there's going to be a lot of picking up in the next two weeks. So it's pretty...
Last two weeks, we've had all our brush trucks out, as well as some dump trucks as well, to try to catch up.
So we can...
It's just going to take a while to get around everything.
Well, so we can tell them that we're going to pick up as much as we can in the next two weeks.
It could literally be several weeks, two or three months, before everything gets picked up from the storm, correct?
Yes, and a lot of people have not even brought it out to the street yet. So it's going to be an ongoing process.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. 7G, consider approval to purchase a pre-owned vehicle for the Criminal Investigation Division. Chief Evans.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. We're wanting to purchase a pre-owned 2012 Dodge Charger. These are similar vehicles that we purchased last year. We actually bought two of these. We purchased this vehicle from the Missouri Highway Patrol. They surplus their vehicles right around 50,000 to 55,000 miles. It is a pursuit-rated vehicle. It does come with the remainder of the factory warranty, which will be 100,000 mile, a five-year powertrain warranty. The cost of this vehicle is $15,500. We'll purchase this through the drug fund, and I would recommend your approval.
And it's just one unit?
Just one vehicle.
Okay, all right. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion. Seeing none, all vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
7H, consider awarding bid for fencing at the new animal shelter. Mr. Davidson.
Mayor and council members, on Monday, we opened bids for fencing at the new animal shelter. This project, we had funds left over from the construction of the new shelter, and we wanted to get some security and fencing around the perimeter of the facility. So the bids would be a chain link fence that would secure the perimeter of the fencing, and also approximately 60 feet of privacy fence to help block the view, the dogs, the animals' views of the neighborhood to the west of the shelter to help hopefully reduce noise and the barking that those families are experiencing, I guess, out there next to the shelter. So it would help with that. So we had, we bid it with a perimeter fencing that included the privacy fence. And we had a pre-bid meeting last week. We had three contractors that show up. You had to attend the pre-bid meeting to be eligible for, to submit a bid. We had three contractors that met on site, and we only received one bid. That bid was from Security Fence. I believe it is a good bid. The bid for the perimeter fence and the privacy fence is $10,716. We added two alternates to consider as well. That was to construct what we call pins inside of the perimeter fencing. The Friends Group asked us to look at adding some pins. The Friends Group would be willing to pay for those pins. Those pins, the alternate for those are $695 per pin. And the Friends Group has already voted to construct five of those, and they would be paying for that and sending, making the donation to the city to see that those pins are constructed. And in addition, we wanted to go ahead and add some mesh screening to the fence, and that alternate was another $2,200. So I'm asking you to approve a not-to-exceed amount of $16,391. That would include the entire fencing, the mesh screening, and the pins. We'd like to point out to you, besides the Friends Group contributing the money to construct the pins, there was also a $7,000 donation as well for this fencing. And so between those two, the city's contribution toward this would be $5,0916.
Very good. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion?
Goodness.
Seeing none, all vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. 7I, consider awarding bid for mowers. Mr. Woods.
Thank you, council. Mr. Mayor and council, we advertised and received bids for three zero-turn commercial-grade mowers, and we received four bids from three different companies. We would recommend the low-bid meeting specification. That'd be Southern Landscape Supply. And we recommend your approval.
Yes, sir. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. 7J, consider awarding bid for leak detection services. Mr. Kelly.
Mayor and council, we have opened our bids for our annual leak detection services. Richards LMC was the low-beater maintenance specs at $110 per mile. We also requested an additional 150 mile proposal, that if both parties agreeable, are agreeable at the end of the first contract, that we may want to extend that for an additional 150 miles. So the total would be $31,790, and I'd recommend approval.
Yes, sir. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion. Seeing none, all vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
All right. 7K, consider resolution R-150304, commending Jim Shipley for serving as Cookeville City Manager. And I will read the resolution that we prepared here. Whereas Mr. Jim Shipley embarked on a remarkable journey over 31 years ago as he began his employment with the City of Cookeville in 1983 as city clerk and finance director, followed by the appointment of city manager in 1993. And whereas Jim's illustrious career as city manager and chief executive officer of the City of Cookeville has spanned almost two decades, having served with 10 city councils, gives testament to his leadership and success, as evidenced by enjoying the longest tenure of any city manager in the history of Cookeville. And whereas, under his guidance, with his uncanny ability to enable councils to enjoy visionary goals, the city has experienced positive growth, with intergovernmental and public-private partnerships being fostered and nurtured, resulting in countless projects coming to fruition. And whereas, while Jim's foresight and success will forever leave a footprint in this city, perhaps some of the most notable projects include the ever-popular Dogwood Park, the new Cookeville-Putnam County Animal Shelter, and its contributions to the economic growth of this city and region with the creation of the Highlands Business Park. And whereas, forever the quintessential public servant Jim Shipley has worked tirelessly for the community he is proud to call home, rising to all occasions as a true leader with honesty, integrity, and dedication, providing direction, forging strong relationships, and maintaining his fiduciary responsibilities as a trustee of the city's assets. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of Cookeville, Tennessee, that on behalf of current and former councils, as well as the citizens and employees of the City of Cookeville, deepest appreciation and congratulations are hereby extended to Jim Shipley for his esteemed service to country and community, with best wishes bestowed for enjoyment and continued prosperity in the years ahead, upon the occasion of his retirement from service as a private in the People's Army, adopted this 5th day of March, 2015. And we will be having a reception tomorrow, Friday, from 4 to 6 here at City Hall, with special recognition at 5:00 PM. And let's have a motion for this.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Go ahead. Comments from the council?
One thing in my association over the last 20-plus years with Jim has been his devotion to fiduciary responsibility. If you keep that in mind, you can't get into too much trouble. And he's guided city councils in ways to keep them fiduciarily responsible. And that's the one thing that I want to make sure that his, that's part of his legacy in public, that he is very fiduciary responsible.
That's a nice way of saying he's cheap. But that made the record there.
The new boiler's probably a good example.
That's right. Yeah, Jim?
If you don't mind, I've got a few comments I've written down, so I could be a little more organized. Today and tomorrow, we're going to be honoring Jim over here for the dedication and service he's given to the City of Cookeville. The many accolades from so many friends, coworkers, near and far away. This is happening today and will tomorrow. And I don't realize, Jim, you didn't know that so many people would be celebrating your retirement. Seriously, Jim has been the financial director, and has been, has been for the last 19 years, has had the title of city manager. But he's been much more than that. He has been a public servant with a passion and commitment to the City of Cookeville. With Jim, you've got respect and straight talk. We all have had to make decisions that didn't satisfy everyone. Jim has had to do this on a much larger scale. He has made choices that he thought were the best for all of Cookeville, just not a few. He is slow to take credit, but is quick to accept blame. The department heads and all the employees of the city know he has their back and their best interests at heart. Cookeville has the reputation throughout the state as being one of the best managed and financially stable cities in Tennessee. This is something we should all be proud of. Jim's leadership was not defined or developed through excessive management and manipulation. Jim worked to inspire people to take action, to move forward towards a particular goal or vision, and do so willingly. He was a facilitator of activities, actions and creative thinking, rather than a prescriptive director of activity. There were and are many people who have helped Cookeville, but it was under Jim's There were and are many people who have helped Cookville, but it was under Jim's leadership that he had the ability to delegate responsibility to others for a common good that makes Cookville a better city. The future is looking bright in Cookville, and Jim will say he had only a small part in this. I smile at this comment, because I know Jim's work has been much larger than his ego. Thank you, Jim, for your service. Your work has made Cookville a much better place to work, live, and retire under your leadership. And I know a lot of people have been asking you what you're going to do, but I'm going to give you and pass this down, Mayor. Here's you a nice little book. It's called The Joy of Not Working. Please enjoy it.
I'll have plenty of time to read it. Thank you very much.
It's going to be hard to, to add anything to what some fine words that some of my fellow councilmen have already said. But, you know, I kind of want to focus, just one little thing that I've noticed, I want to focus on. I think a lot of times, it's maybe, it's a small, private moments that help define the character of a person. And remember, just a private conversation Jim and I were having one time, he mentioned that if somebody was going to be, a lot of times, people will get notices that they're behind on a payment, or they're missing this or missing that. And if Jim would, and Jim says, you know, I try to go, I try to go out of my way, a lot of times, call these folks and let them know this is coming up. And he didn't have to do that. He didn't have to do that. But he chooses to, and I think that, I think that defines the type of leadership that Jim has bestowed upon this city for many, many years. And I, I thank Jim for that, and I'm going to, I'm going to miss seeing you around.
Thank you.
Very good words. Having served and, served under and with Jim eight years before, and now, now this again, and I know, I know one thing I can definitely say without hesitation is, you know, Jim and I share a common love, and that's of our hometown, and that's Cookville. And I know all of his decisions have always been made in what's, he thought was the best interest of Cookville. And, and that's, all of us as, as servants, that's all we can ever hope to do, is, is do what we think is best for, for what we're doing as, as servants, but all, especially when it's your hometown, makes a difference. So, thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
See, we have a motion and a second. We'll, we'll just approve, we'll make this official with a 4-0 vote. Thank you.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Okay, this time we'll have a time for a hearing of citizens that wish to address the council on non-agenda items. Do we have anyone that would like to do that? All right, any other comments from the council? Oh, we do. Please come to the podium and identify yourself, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and council. My name's Matt Swallows, a taxpaying citizen. And I wanted to say, I've, I've had the, the honor and privilege to work with Jim Shipley for four years, and to work with everybody in this room for four years.